I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, November 16th, 2015. Want to welcome everyone. Luger Buchen is here from International Gospel Outreach Church. There he is, right there. He's going to come forward and give us our invocation. And also, please, the flag. Would anyone, please, rise?
Good evening. On behalf of our pastors, Robin and Cheryl, and the staff at IGO Church, and Ministry Training Center, please accept our sincere congratulations on the wisdom and foresight demonstrated by the citizens of Smyrna in re-electing a man of vision and purpose as mayor. Dear Father in Heaven, we thank you. We thank you. You are the great God whom we respect, whom we honor in this city. Father, we thank you for your protection over Smyrna. We thank you for your blessing and grace and favor over every area of the city and all people who work on behalf of it. Father, we thank you that the people will move close to your heart, and we pray for that in the name. Father, we thank you for that, and we may this meeting tonight be guided by your wisdom and grace. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And for those folks that are here and watching, and if you're looking for a new church, International Gospel Outreach is located at the intersection of Dixie Avenue and Wyndham Hill Road. Been here about fifteen, I guess fifteen years or so. Sure they'd like, they'd love to stop by for a visit if you want to change or if you want to start going to church. Agenda changes. We have a couple of items on the agenda that will be tabled. Public hearing on 2015-166 will be tabled. That's the Bank Street again. Will be tabled for, it's been, it'll be tabled from December 7th when we get to it. Also, item 2015-261, which is item B on the public hearing, that will be tabled till December 7th. That's one of the rezonings on Spring Street. We will hear the item C. So those are the only two changes on the agenda. Okay? All right. We'll get on into the land issues, zonings, and annexations. A 2015-166, it's a public hearing, rezoning request Z15. I want to let Terry Nudlewich read that one and make the motion at the same time. So we're not going to do it twice.
Yes, at this time, I do move to table item 4A 2015-166. This is the public hearing presenting request, Z15-008, rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of five single-family homes. It's a 1.27 acre tract land lot. It's 488 through, it's 1091, 1107, and 1121 Bank Street. Applicant is Pritchard Brothers Incorporated. This is tabled from October 19th, 2015 until, it was tabled until today, November 16th. It is now going to be tabled by the request of the applicant to December 7th of 2015.
Second.
And motion second to table this till December 7th. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Pro 7-0. Item B, Mrs. Nudlewich, is also one that we're going to request to be tabled. You'll just do that one.
Yes, at this time, I do move to table item 4B 2015-261. This is the public hearing for the rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of five new single-family residences at a density of 3.81 units per acre. It is a 2.36 acre tract land lot, 593. This is 1505, 1515, 1525, 1529, 1533, and 1537 Spring Street. The applicant is Pradera Group LLC. The applicant has requested to table this item to a day which hopefully will not live in infamy, December 7th, 2015.
Second.
Motion second to table this item till December 7th, 2015. All those in favor of the motion to table, please vote now. Pro 7-0. Item C 2015-356, public hearings on request, Z15-020, rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for construction of four single-family homes, 1.099 acre tract land lot 560, 1563, and 1571 Spring Street, Wilson Built Homes. Is the applicant here? I'm going to ask that. Okay. Will you give us the background, please?
Mayor, the Planning and Zoning Board heard the rezoning, this rezoning request on October 12th of 2015, and recommended approval by unanimous vote, seven to nothing. And the Community Development Department is recommending approval of the zoning request from R15 to RAD conditional for the construction of four new homes.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning this zoning request? If there's anyone that would like to make any testimony for or against, they need to come forward at this time to be sworn in. Even if you just think you want to make a comment and you don't, then I want to get you sworn in one time. It doesn't hurt to get sworn in. Don't be afraid. Being sworn in does not make you have to give any testimony. Y'all can go back and sit down. We don't need to swear the applicant in? Anybody that, there you go, thinks that they might want to make a comment and just want to get just sworn in two, a second time? If you guys just have a seat. It's in Mrs. Terry Nudlewich's district. I'm sure she's going to turn it over to Ken Sudra for her.
I am going to turn it over to Rusty Martin, actually.
Good evening.
Good evening, Rusty.
How y'all doing?
Good, good.
All right. This rezoning case went before the PNZ on October 12th. As Mike said, it was approved by a vote of seven zero. You guys will make the final action tonight. This is a property located at 1463 and 1471 Spring Road. It's just over an acre in size. And the applicant is proposing to tear down the existing two homes and build four new homes. That action will require rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional. And as you can see, the zoning map, everything surrounding the property is on R15, and then there's some RAD that's around a little bit further out. The existing future land use designates this property as moderate-density residential. So that's up to 4.5 units per acre is the density, single-family density that's allowed. The applicant is not proposing to change this density. His density for his development is 3.64 units per acre. And as you can see with the future development map, everything surrounding this property is got a moderate-density residential land use classification. Here's the proposed site plan. As you can see, he's going to have two homes that'll front on Spring Street, that their fronts will face Spring Street, but their driveways will come off of Walker Street and Mimosa Circle. Then he'll have two homes to the north that'll front and have driveway access off Mimosa Circle and Walker Street. The applicant is proposing to pipe this existing storm ditch that runs along the northeast side of the property and then runs south towards Spring Road. He is also proposing an underground bioretention area for all storm water for the site. And that'll be located in between all the houses. And that connection to the city storm system will occur in this area, right at Spring Street. In addition, the applicant is proposing a 10-foot right-of-way dedication to get both Walker Street and, or Walker Court and Mimosa Circle to the city standard of 50-foot wide right-of-way. And then he is also proposing a 5-foot right-of-way dedication along Spring Street. And there'll be a 5-foot sidewalk from Mimosa Circle along Spring Street up Walker Court.
Does that connect to an existing sidewalk?
The portion along Spring Street will.
Mimosa does not?
Mimosa and Walker Circle, I believe, do not have existing sidewalks.
Rusty, was that you? I can't see your lips moving.
What? There's a, I mean, there's one, there's across Spring Street, but this will also connect to the, to the units that we just rezoned a couple of years ago that have a sidewalk over there. These are the proposed home elevations. Some of these may change because they do have side-entry garages proposed. So those garages will orientate around to the side of the house. These are the pictures of the subject property. And these are pictures of adjacent properties, either across the street or properties that are contiguous. Community Development recommends approval of the requested zoning from R15 to RAD conditional for the construction of four single-family homes at a density of 3.64 units per acre with the following conditions. Number one, there shall be protective covenants with mandatory HOA association. Number two, the detention pond shall be placed and screened appropriately to be unobtrusive to homes inside and outside the development. Number three, all utilities within the development shall be underground. Number four, the developer shall be responsible for any traffic improvements deemed necessary by the city engineer during plan review. Number five, no debris may be buried on any lot or common area. Number six, the developer will comply with the city's current tree ordinance. Number seven, all landscape plans must be prepared, stamped and signed by a Georgia Registered Landscape Architect. Number eight, all yards and common areas are to be sodded in landscape. And number nine is a tree planting schedule for each lot. Special condition, special condition, which is condition number 10, the development shall maintain the following minimum setbacks: a front setback of 25 feet, a street-side setback of 25 feet, an interior-side setback of 5 feet, an exterior-side of 10, and a rear setback of 15. The minimum driveway length should be 22 feet, and that's measured from building face to back of sidewalk. The next stipulation, the driveways on Walker and Mimosa shall not be closer than 50 feet to the curb on Spring Street. This provide adequate distance so cars aren't backing out into people's turning movements as they come off of Spring. The next condition is each home shall have a two-car garage with decorative garage doors. Next condition, the development shall be developed with a minimum lot size of 9,166 square feet. Next development, or next condition, the right-of-ways along Spring Street, Walker Court, and Mimosa Circle shall be increased to 50 feet. Therefore, a dedication of approximately 10 feet is required along Mimosa Circle and Walker Court. A dedication of 5 feet is required along Spring Street. Next condition, the composition of the, the composition of the homes within the residential subdivision shall include a mixture of elements, including but not limited to brick, stone, shake, and hardy plank. No elevation shall be comprised of 100% hardy plank siding. The residents whose lots abut external roadways shall be, shall not be permitted to utilize more than 25% hardy plank siding for any elevation facing these roads. The next stipulation, lots one and three shall have, have the front of the home facing Spring Street as shown on the zoning plan. And the last, the last stipulation on this page, all homes shall have usable front porches. The next stipulation, a developer shall provide a 5-foot sidewalk, 2-foot grass buffer along Spring Street, Walker Court, and Mimosa Circle for the length of the development. Next condition, all trees within the limits of disturbance and not located within tree protection areas must be removed during land clearing and grading phase of the development. Next condition, the developer shall be responsible for any water and sewer improvements deemed necessary for the provision of services to the community. Next commission, condition, the developer shall pipe the existing storm water ditch that runs along the northern and eastern boundaries of the property. The city engineer shall review and approve all plans. The next condition, the developer shall be responsible for any storm water improvements deemed necessary by the city engineer. And approval of the subject property for residential attached, detached zoning district shall be conditioned upon the development of the property in substantial compliance with the site plan dated 9/11/2015 and created by Paul Lee Engineering. And finally, the applicant shall be bound to the elevation submitted and dated on 9/11/2015. That, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Mr. Martin?
Rusty, you mentioned that, and you actually showed a photograph of it or on our screen, that there's detention between lots one and three that runs northern-south. Is that a, is it a ditch or exactly what is it?
I'll let the engineer explain what their proposal is, but it should be an underground bioretention area.
Okay, and it's piped to our storm system?
Yes, sir, that's the plan at this point. When it goes through, hopefully it'll go through permitting like that as well.
Okay. One other question that came up. You said something about, on the back of the property, there was, must be an existing ditch back there that you were requiring that the developers pipe as well?
Yeah, on your screen, it's, I put it up there, but along the northeastern part of the property and then along the eastern boundary that goes along Walker Court, about 5 feet off the back of curb, there's an existing ditch right there that carries all the water that comes off of, I think, Moore Circle, and comes down that, that ditch and then gets into the city storm, storm system at Spring Street.
So that will be piped at this point, then?
Yes, that's the requirement.
Okay, that's all ahead, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Thank you, thank you. So, so I guess if I'm trying to understand this, so there's not really a detention pond on the properties on the four lots then, right? Because of the, the...
There'll be a detention facility, and they will have to meet city requirements for storm water management.
Okay. And let's see, this, the other thing I was looking at, the one where it said the, the lot said abut external roadways have to have a certain requirement as far as 25% hardy plank. But will all of these abut external roadways, all four of them?
They will all abut external roadways. So those elevations that front on those roadways, they have asked to be able to have the ability to have at least 25% hardy plank on those elevations.
Okay.
The standard condition does not allow any hardy plank on those elevations.
Right, I understand.
That's why that, that condition was in the special conditions.
Okay, and all four of them. And then as far as, sometimes I guess I've seen the common area requirement for a development at like 200 square feet per lot. Is this, is that a requirement in this?
It's not a requirement as part of this because this is an infill within the existing community.
Okay, thank you.
Rusty, I have a question about the, the storm water and the drainage. I know I got a little bit of information today, and you probably have the same information. If you could share that just about, which pipes are being changed out or being replaced to improve what pipes are currently there?
That'd probably be a better question for Public Works Director.
Mr. Stokes, do you mind joining us?
We did a, a video of the system in front on Spring Street, and then there's a piece that wraps the corner on Walker Street. And the video determined that there's a, I think there's a catch basin, the starting catch basin on Spring Street, and it wraps the corner to another junction box in the head wall. We've asked the developer that he's going to have to replace that section of storm sewer. And then, and then from there out toward Mimosa, that, that piece is going to be, a new piece put in the, in the existing ditch.
In terms of water impact on the, on the, the existing houses that are there now from this, do you think that any negative impact from this construction is going to be mitigated?
It'll be mitigated and then, and with the addition of the storm sewer piping in, in the existing ditch, because right now, that's a, that's a, pretty much a maintenance nightmare for us because it gets cluttered with all kinds of things. Running that new storm sewer pipe up and into the tail end of the property will, will improve the characteristics of that, of this, of that drainage way. I think one other thing that may, we may want to ensure that maybe part of the covenants is for this particular development, that the, the properties are responsible for keeping that head wall where that pipe will end, keeping it maintained.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Martin?
Mr. Martin, you indicated that it is an infill within a community. Does that connote Homeowners Association membership for these four homes in a community?
They will need an HOA because there will be a detention facility that'll need to be maintained by those homes.
But there is no HOA that encompasses this. This would be a separate standalone HOA.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr.? Is, is the applicant here? Please step forward.
How y'all doing?
How you doing? Just tell us who you are and what you...
Terry Wilson with Wilson Built Homes, the owner. And proposing to build four homes off Spring Street, two facing Spring Street, one facing Walker Court, and the other one facing Mimosa. Yes, we did talk about it in the first meeting, that we would, like Scott said, add it to the HOA to where the pipe is going up along Walker and into the back of the property. Off the back property line, it'd just stay about, I think, a minimum 20-foot off is what code says. But we're going to put a trash catch on top of it. So we would be adding that to the HOA.
When you say a trash, is it like a grate?
Yeah, it's a grate, so it's, the way it was explained to me, my engineer can probably explain it a lot better. When water's going, it actually runs up and catches on the top of it. So the four homeowners that live there can actually get it. It does not get clogged into the pipe.
You think we're going to believe that? I don't, I'm just saying.
That's what I'm told by my engineer.
I went to tech and you did all these stuff, engineers, and, I mean, it just sounds, I mean, I'm sure that it works, but it's just like, it's pretty...
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's not going to catch every little piece going through that pipe.
What kind of, what kind of maintenance is required? What will the homeowners need to do? Because one thing that we've seen, and it's almost a, just a universal truth to a degree, is homeowners associations don't always understand and/or if they, if they do understand, don't necessarily understand how important it is to maintain these systems. And, I mean, is this something that, is it pretty apparent? Is it pretty clear when, when, with, with this trash catch?
Yeah, it's going to be very apparent on Lot Two that you will see it. But I can have Mark Lee come up here and explain the process to you and what he wants to design.
You're going to have to direct him because he ain't moving. There he is.
Hi, I'm Mark Lee with Paul Lee Engineering. The, the thing we're proposing to put on the end is what they call a flared-in safety section head wall, which has an angle to it like this. And so what it does is it has a screen that as the water comes in, it always pushes it to the top, leaving the bottom open so it's flowing. And it's a typical DOT-type head wall. Does that pretty much explain it?
Question, are we, are we talking about the type of DOT you see on the side of the road where it is a, it's a flared-in section, and then you'll have pipes located every foot?
They have some like that, but no, this will have more of a screen. It'll be like, like a bar, rebar, rebar, mat of some sort that lays across. It's just like a, a drop inlet screen that, that has a hinge that can be lifted up and dropped back down. It's a typical...
How tight is this mesh we're talking about? I mean, what I'm concerned about is this time of year. I mean, I, I have tons of leaves in my, my yard right now.
It's typical six by six, six by six inches.
Oh, it's like a six by six screen then?
And that's for large limbs, things like that that you don't want in the pipes. It, it lets the small debris flow on through because it'll carry anyone.
It's not a leaf catcher, it's a limb catcher?
It's not a leaf catcher, it's a stick log preventer. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am?
Can you tell me where that's going to be located again?
The, the head wall will be set approximately 15 to 20 feet away from the property line so that we can create enough depression to take in and create no more headwater pooling than is already created by the ditch itself. So this is typical things, you know, the law requires us to not backwater onto an adjacent property. So that's the, the typical plan right now.
Okay, so my next question is, I don't know what that, what it looks like exactly, but will that be screened with landscaping from the adjacent property owner?
I wouldn't recommend putting anything in the ditch because you'll create more of a water flow issue. I mean, screening is, is, is required by the landscaping code somewhat, but you don't put it in the ditch, no.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions of the engineer? Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Anything else you'd like to add before we call up the folks that were...
Not at this moment. Not right now, sir.
Thanks. There was a couple of folks that were sworn in that'd like to make any comments you'd like to make. Please step forward, tell us who you are and where you live, and any comments that you'd like to make.
I'm just going to read what I've wrote.
Terry.
My name is Ava Jenkins. I live at 1437 Mimosa Circle. I have lived there for 42 years. This drainage ditch starts from Amarr Circle and runs alongside Judy Bryson's house, makes a left behind my house, a Mimosa Circle. It collects a lot of tree limbs and leaves. I have it cleaned out at least three times a year, and it needs it more than that. I keep behind my, oh, well, I already said that. It, let's see. It runs down behind our houses on Mimosa and gets clogged and causes the water to back up and flood my yard. I gave pictures to the zoning board of my backyard with water looking like a lake there. I'm very concerned about the water. I believe in closing this ditch with pipes will make it worse. Whoever buys these houses, I don't believe, will keep the front of this pipe that collects all the yard debris cleaned away. I just don't feel like the new homeowners that move in there, even with the homeowners association, is going to get out there and keep that clean. And I gave, I don't know if y'all have seen the pictures that I gave to the zoning board of my yard. I gave about four pictures flooded the night of. And I mean, it, we're talking lots of water. We're talking, I even have like a waterfall that comes over the ditch. When it backs up, it just, it just comes over and empties into my yard. And then it just keeps going. And then it just keeps going down, you know.
Ms. Jenkins, is this because debris is in the ditch and because it's not cleaned out?
Yes.
And you're fearful that if we require them to pipe this, is it even going to back it up worse?
That's what I'm afraid of. And the houses behind me that Terry built, the way they set up and the driveway comes down and the rocks that they have that come down, kind of the hill to the ditch, they really, they even block the ditch some because they're not, they're into the ditch, which when the water comes down from Judy's house and makes the turn behind my house and jumps over, but whatever goes on down, then you have these rocks from his last job that are in this ditch that even backs it up even more. And if you go down, some of the homeowners keep it cleaned out, but some don't.
You're saying there's an existing problem already?
Oh, it's been for 42 years. So, you know, I'm just afraid of the closing of the ditch. So, that's-
All right, thank you.
Maybe I'm not understanding it, but does that not make sense that if you put the water into the pipe quicker, that it would mitigate some of that problem? Do you see that as a possibility?
It's already in the ditch, I mean-
But I mean, we're going, yeah.
If, if it's piped, would that then prevent the limbs and debris from clogging it?
There should be less of a flow of water which is carrying the debris which then clogs up, it would seem to me. Is that not-
No.
Well, maybe we should ask the engineer.
We'll ask them, but that's not your interpretation of it, obviously. Okay, maybe the engineer can answer that.
And I'm Judy Bryson and I'm the one that lives at 279 Morris Circle and I've lived there for 47 years. And not, does that water not come off Morris Circle? But the water comes off Roswell Street. So we get all the water from Roswell Street, all the water from Walker Street that comes down the side of my house and goes down behind Ava's and goes down that way. And I told Terry he needed to put just a bridge over that and keep it clean and let the city keep keeping it clean. If the city wasn't there to keep that ditch clean and the HOA's not doing anything over on Morris Circle. I mean, we've got a, what do you call it, that spinstin', and we have to, a retention pond, we have to beg them to come and, and that gets this high before they get somebody out there to cut it. But if you, it's not just the water, it comes off of Roswell Street, there's sidewalks, but they're flat. So all of that water comes down. And then when Terry built that last house, Terry, if you remember, there was a puddle out there and instead of making it a five-foot concrete slab, I mean, the thing, he had to bring it up to six feet so the water that sat in there with the retention pond wouldn't get in the house. And those people have had problems all the time since they built, when they built it in. And it's not Terry's fault, it's just, you just need, and a pipe won't, won't fit it. They've been trying, Vic Broyles tried to put me a pipe in beside my house years ago. I said, it won't do it because it'll clog up and then who's going to clean? My ditch where it comes down the ditch, to put a curb up, he put a pipe in from the neighbor's street up down. Now my driveway's caving in where the pipes are probably clogged up all the way through, but the water's still trickling and I've got like three or four spigots that come into that ditch and then takes it behind Ava. But sometimes it's so bad that my backyard is like, well, Max, you remember, you used to be my councilman. How bad it was. And it's just, but it's all the water coming down there. And if he puts a pipe in it, a pipe's not going to help it. And he's probably going to have to build it, come back in for a zoning notice to fill that house up so the water won't get into the house that he's building. So, I mean, it's just terrible. Y'all got any questions for me? I'll be glad to answer, I was told to behave when I come up here.
You're doing good.
All right, I'm not saying anything.
I wouldn't say that, but you're doing good.
But I mean, he can have the houses, I don't care. I mean, I think that's too many houses to put there because we've got four beside me, but I think that's too many. But as long as he keeps that ditch open so it'll flow and the city will keep it cleaned up, you know.
Can, can you tell me exactly where you, do you live on Mimosa Circle?
I live on Mimosa, no, I live on Morris Circle, which is off of Walker Street.
It says Walker Court.
I'm the house with the big deck.
Okay. Thank you.
And there's three houses down on Morris Circle that faces back up toward Walker Street. So there's a pipe that's in those three houses and mine's the last one.
All right, thank you very much. I want to make, I want to ask Rusty, would you step back up to the, we're requiring this pipe to be put in, right?
It's, it's a mutual issue between the applicant and city. I mean, we reviewed it, it allows him to have, provide access with his driveways across the ditch and be able to pipe that ditch. I mean, we've looked at it, we feel comfortable that it's going to work.
Sounds like we got problems up Crete that we need to take care of or should have taken care of. Mr. Stokes is here, so Mr. Johnson's here.
Mr. Stokes, how, how much of this ditch is the city currently maintaining and is this something that, that the, that we're going to make a habit of continuing to do as new developments are built? Because it's, you know, we don't maintain detention ponds for any HOAs or neighborhoods and I, I would not anticipate that we were going, that we, if any more ditches were built, we would be in the habit of maintaining any of those. Is that a fair statement?
Well, the only piece of the ditch that we try to maintain is the piece on Walker Court from, that run, it's the frontage of this proposed development. It's right off the edge of the road, it's inundated with trees, it's, it's not a, it's not a decent ditch. Realistically, it, all the trees need to be removed and a, and a proper ditch be put in to even accommodate the mass of water that comes through these people's backyard. Yeah, it's, it's a, it's an overgrown, and the root systems of the trees collect debris and it, you know, probably right now it needs to be cleaned out.
Do we have a drainage easement through there?
No, it's, it's within the right-of-way of Walker right now. It's like I said, it's right off the back of the curb.
So there's not, there's not currently a ditch there now?
There's a ditch, but it's, it's, it's not a proper ditch.
It sounds like ditch is a generous term.
It, it is, it's, it's just a way to walk-
Scott, are these anything like on Highland Drive, you know, in front of the, so they're not that deep?
No, no. So this is advantageous to the city with him, with, with a development coming in here to remove these trees, put in the proper-sized pipe to collect the storm water because right now what's in there doesn't allow the storm water to flow effectively. And it should help with respect to the flow of storm water that comes from Morris or the other circles that are back there.
Is there currently a catch basin?
There's a catch basin at the corner of Spring Street and Walker Court.
And what's, and what's that for?
Just a little head wall that catches what this nasty ditch here on Walker Court.
So then we do have some responsibility. We, we built a head wall to, to take this, this water coming out.
There's a head wall there to collect that water. And we do maintain as best we can this ditch on Walker Court, but realistically it's full of trees and it's just not a, it's not a good ditch.
So you think that piping this, I mean, that, that will improve the situation for the folks upstream also?
Improve the flow of water through there.
If this weren't coming up because these houses were proposed to be built, would this be, would piping this be something that you might recommend on its own to improve the situation?
It need, it needs improvement that way, yes.
Okay.
Any, anyone else that want to make any, nope, you weren't sworn in. Man alive. Swear in, but I really don't like to do this, this is the third time and I gave you an opportunity, let's sweater in, swear in, tell us where you-
Sorry. Yes. I do.
Tell us who are we?
Amy Shea, 1431 Mimosa Circle. Been there about 27 years. This same developer built the four homes that are next to Judy's house. And after we did planning and zoning, we had the city engineer or someone from the city come out and look at the retention pond that he put in there. And they decided that the HOA needed to fix it, it's not working correctly. That's part of the problem. Part of the problem is the water's coming straight through Judy's house now. It's coming through Teddy's house, which is on the other side of Ava. So we have a problem there. So we're looking at what the builder built on those four homes and the retention pond was not done correctly, the drainage was not done correctly. Teddy's house is taking on more water as well. So you go on downstream and you're going to have an HOA that's supposed to keep this ditch cleaned out where the pipe is. Well, you know, how many people have picked up their leaves yet in their yard? You know, there, there's no guarantee that the HOA is going to fix that. There's no guarantee that the HOA that's next to Judy is going to get that retention pond fixed. You know, nobody's been back out to check and see if they did what the city asked them to do. All the neighbors were out there that day, they looked at it, but who's to say they're going to get that fixed? So if you put the pond out, the pipe in, you put a drainage, you know, a screen over it and it backs up, every one of these women that are sitting out here that are looking at their property is going to back up into their property. And then what are we going to do with it? So if it's not built into the HOA to have that screen filled, cleaned out, they're, they're going to drown, I mean, they're going to get water in their house. Thank you, sorry.
Well, I think it is going to be built into, you mean written into the HOA requirements?
But Rusty, if you want to come up here, just so I can ask you or Scott, and I don't know whether the last statement is true or, I mean, I'm not, I mean, if the, what you're, what that, what the last speaker said was that the detention pond is not sized right, it's not working right and nobody's doing anything about it. It's not, once the builder builds it, he turns it over to the HOA and then they maintain it, is that correct?
Yes. And along with that, when we're going through the plating process, they're required now to submit an inspection maintenance agreement with every detention facility we do.
Okay, do you know of any problems that we've had with this, with the detention pond that's currently there and I would assume it's been turned over to the HOA? Do you know of any problems that-
I, I've heard of it. I, I don't know, we'd have to check with Paul Osborne and see what's going on out there.
Yeah.
And check with Eric. But for, to set the record straight, that four lot development on Mimosa, or Morris Circle was developed by Hank Dudak, he did all the infrastructure work with the pond in. And then Ryan Locke built the first two homes, the one on Walker Court and then the one next to it that come down Mimosa. Terry bought the, the last two lots during the downturn and, and built those two homes. So the infrastructure and everything was in there, Terry purchased-
That's all Dudak, the legacy lives on?
That, I mean, he, he was the original developer-
Right.
And then Ryan Locke was the first two homes and Terry built the second.
But the city would have to have inspected that infrastructure to make sure it was properly put in. I don't want to throw off anybody, if, if we accepted it and said it was okay and we gave a building permit to finish the subdivision, then it seems like we got, we got some responsibility in this too. Okay.
So I guess I'm hearing that the HOA is responsible for cleaning it out and I hear you asking about the, the city approves the plan. Is there anything in place that, like, that shows that the city is inspecting the, to make sure that they're clean? Or does the HOA have that responsibility?
So, so our department will inspect detention, detention pond's a responsibility, HOA will inspect them to ensure that they meet, that they've been maintained. And with this one in particular, it sounds like that there may be some maintenance issues with it. So basically tomorrow, we're going to have an inspector out there to ensure that this thing is functioning properly. And if not, he will let the HOA know what they need to do and when to do it and if they don't do it, then they go to court.
But during the development of a, whether it's six houses, eight houses, 10 houses, they go through a process that they have to, that we inspect that detention pond just like we inspect the houses. And we have to say that that detention pond is built to the, to the required specifications, right?
Right.
So it's on us and then when he, then when the builder finishes out and he turns everything over to the HOA, then we're still saying that it's okay when we turn it over, when he turns it over to the HOA.
When we accept the subdivision, and subdivision doesn't have to be streets, just the subdivision of property and there's a detention pond or a bio swell or whatever they, they put in, the, the, the design engineer's going to certify that it's been put in correctly. We're going to ensure that it's been put in correctly. And then periodically, we're going to do inspections either from complaints or from time permitting for my, my staff to get out there to make sure these things are functioning properly.
And if they're not, then you, what do we, do we go back to the HOA?
If they're not, we go back to the HOA. Now this one in particular is one of the others back when we had the recession where things, you know, you had a builder that, or developer that left and then you got builders in there. So this, this one was, we've been at, we have been out there and we were out there when this thing started changing hands. And there was, there were issues with it, but the builder at that point had to take care of those problems and not the developer because he left us.
So you're talking about the four that were owned by different builders, the ones on Morris up in that area? So do they have an HOA there then? Just by way, that whole, that thing happened, there is an HOA? Okay.
They do have an HOA, yeah. And that, and I feel like now we've, our path has diverged into almost what's two independent conversations. And the conversation we're having right now, I think, is not necessarily, it's relevant to Agenda Item 4C, but it's not what we're trying to decide tonight. And it does sound, so you'll have an inspector out, speaking of the, the B-plot conversation, you'll have an inspector out there-
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, and we will get this figured out. So what happens if we're able to get the HOA and the legacy of the Dudak development and they can get their retention pond doing what it needs to be doing? And then if this proposed, you know, if Item 4C is to move forward and that ditch is piped, what is your prognostication on what will happen when there's a big rain?
Until debris washes down this ditch and causes an issue or could cause an issue with this, this head wall or flared-in section that they're going to put in, it should function fine.
Okay.
It's just got to be maintained and hopefully the builder will convey that to his-
So perfect world, then we have the HOA upstream at Morris Circle fixing and maintaining their detention pond properly. We've got the city, please correct me if I'm wrong, the city maintaining the part of the ditch that will continue to exist? Or no? Okay.
We don't maintain that ditch.
Okay, that's what I thought, that's why I'm confused about what the city's role is in maintaining any of these ditches.
We don't maintain this ditch.
Okay, that's, that clarifies that. So then, then we have, so we have HOA maintained detention pond, then we have the ditch that's not really a ditch. And then we have the proposed piped section that's the furthest part downstream of the area that we're talking about tonight. And that's going to be piped and then it's also going to have the trash catch, which will then, I don't know, mitigates the right word, but it will greatly reduce the number of limbs and things like that that get washed into the pipe, which then clog up and lead to the backup with these ladies' homes that's by the ditch. Is that, am I in the right?
Sounds great.
Okay. So with the, so basically, what, I guess my question is, if, if the combination of the HOA, Dudak HOA, getting their detention pond doing what it needs to be doing, this, what we're talking about tonight, the pipe going in with the limb mitigate, the grate, and I'm forgetting the technical term, that will help the area in the middle that is currently having a lot of the backup?
It should help them tremendously.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. Lowich?
Okay.
What? You got a question, Andrew?
Okay, so that, if any of that is, is clear, it's clear, I think it's clear to me. With everything that's happening in place and with the- With everything that's happening in place and with the fact that now we know that the HOA upstream, their detention pond is going to be doing what it needs to be doing. And I'm comfortable that staff is going to handle that. And I'll be able to follow up and communicate to the residents here tonight what is happening. I think I have all of your, I know I have your email address, Amy. And I think I have a way to get in touch with, and I can get y'all's contact information also afterwards. Because it seems like that's the source of a lot of the problems. And it seems like that's frankly, you know, an easy fix. And that's that we make the HOA be responsible for what they're supposed to be responsible for. So I'm comfortable with the water plan, with the piping that's being talked about. I'm comfortable with the staff assessment of this. So, and with the other aspects of this, you know, with the four homes, there were a lot of conversations that took place between members of the neighborhood there, people in the community and the builder getting to what we're seeing tonight, which does have the two homes that are facing Spring Street and the home on Mimosa and the home on Walker, but with no additional driveways going out onto Spring Street. So it's nice that we can actually find that balance because that is not always so easily found. So this time I am comfortable going forward to move to approve this Item 4C zoning request, 2015, I'm sorry, Z15-020. We're zoning from R15 to RID conditional for the construction of four single-family homes to 1.099 acre tract landlot 560. It is 1463 and 1471 Spring Street. It is Wilson Built Homes LLC is the applicant. And that is, you know, again, this is not a stipulation, but this is just making note on the record that we had this conversation about the upstream HOA. And I will make sure that there is follow-up that happens with that.
Motion second to approve this rezoning request. Any discussion?
Just one point of clarification, if I could, just to assure. My understanding is this erstwhile ditch and the tree growth will be, in essence, removed and replaced with piping underground and a new landscaping feature. Is that accurate, Mr. Stokes? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 7-0.
And I just wrote the note to myself to follow up tomorrow with you, Scott, on the HOA detention pond.
Five is previous licenses. Next item on the agenda, we have none. Six is formal business. A, 2015-398, approval of recording the official city election results for general election November the 4th, 2015. Mr. Mike Jones for City, Ms. Ray.
Mayor, I defer the conversation to our city clerk who managed the election for November 4th.
Ms. Terry Graham.
We held an election on November the 4th and we would like to record the election finals, which would be for Mayor Max Bacon. For Ward 1, Derek Norton. Ward 2, Andrea Bluestein. Ward 3, Terry Anulowicz. Ward 4, Charles Corky Welch. Ward 5, Susan Wilkinson. Ward 6, Doug Stoner. And Ward 7, Ron Fennel.
You have a document or something?
There's a document online. I didn't bring one down with me.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I think Terry, Finance Administrator, F and A.
It is, yes. At this time, I would like to move to approve Item 6A. This is 2015-398, approval of the recording of the official city election results for the general election of November 4th, 2015. And thank you, Terry Graham, for the rundown.
Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved 7-0. 7-0, commercial building permits, we have none. Item 8 is consent agenda. Mr. Jones, if you please read the consent agenda for council's approval.
Yes, sir. There are four items on your consent agenda tonight. The first item is approval of the November 2nd, 2015 mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B is an RFP award, 16-12, is the fire system inspections, maintenance, the lowest bidder, All-Star Fire, for $62,743 and authorize the mayor to execute the related documents. Item C is a RFP award, 16-17. This is the Spring Road widening to the lowest bidder Baldwin Paving for a base bid amount of $4,557,598.79 and authorize the mayor to execute related documents. And finally, item D is approval and adoption of amendments to the defined benefit plan and authorize the mayor to execute the related documents.
Do you hear a motion? We approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion second, any discussion?
Yes, I just wanted to note on the Item 8C, which is the $4.5 million paving bid, because it is a very large dollar amount to have on the consent agenda. But it is also, we actually already voted to approve this when we voted to approve the SPOLOST for 2016. So what this is doing is just really specifying what the expenditure is going to be and who the contractor is going to be. So I did want to clarify that in case anyone watching tonight had questions about why we were just, why we were putting such a large number on the consent agenda.
And Mr. Mayor, just for further clarification, I think this includes some 2011 approval dollars as well. Is that right, Mr. Administrator?
Yes, sir. That is from 2011 SPOLOST dollars and will additionally include funding from the newly passed 2016 SPOLOST.
Okay. We have motion second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Committee reports will start tonight with Ms. Bentley, Patricia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to mention that the item that we just approved on awarding the bid to Baldwin Paving, that's from Bell Drive to Cobb Parkway. And it's the one that we've talked about widening. And it only has to do with the road. It doesn't have to do with the overhead lights and the synchronization of that. That will come up at a later time. And secondly, Thanksgiving is coming up. And I hope everybody has a great Turkey Day and don't eat too much. And we'll see you next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
I have very little to say tonight, other than I hope all of you have a very nice Thanksgiving. And if you're going out of town, do so safely. Because it looks like we're going to have rain again, depending on where you're going. With that, I yield.
Ms. Terry Nolich.
Thank you. Yes, the lights are going up around the Market Village. And I just hope to see everyone at the home for the holiday celebration after everyone has a very good and safe Thanksgiving.
Mr. Corky Welch, Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Santa Claus is coming to town also. So if you have young children, please bring them out to see Santa. You can find the dates and times on the website. I'd also like to thank the voters of Ward 4 for coming out on Election Day. As even with 20% or somewhere near 20%, the voters are only 20% coming out. I believe we were the highest count in Cobb County. So appreciate everybody coming out. Thank you for the reelection and the vote of confidence. I hope to serve you well for the next four years. And that's all I have to say.
And Susan Wilkinson.
Thank you. I have a couple of things I would like to announce for the Parks and Recreation Department. On December 1st, the Tuesday after Thanksgiving, we will have the annual Coming Home for the Holidays Celebration and Tree Lighting in the Smyrna, in front of the Smyrna Community Center on the, on the Village Green Circle. And you can come, the festivities start at 5:00 until 8:00. And the lighting of the tree will occur at 7:00. Santa, you can watch Santa come in. And he will light the big Christmas tree in the middle of the Village Green with his magic dust. So please join on Tuesday, December 1st. And also, there's a new event this year. This is being performed by the International School of Ballet that's in the downtown Smyrna area. And they are performing a festive program of excerpts of Tchaikovsky's classical ballet, its highlights of the Nutcracker. And that will be performed at Campbell High School Theater on December 13th at 4:00 p.m. And the tickets are $10 for adults and $5 for children. And these tickets can be purchased by going to the City of Smyrna website. And you can purchase them online. So I hope to see you there. And also, I want to thank all those that voted in Ward 5 on November 3rd. And thank you for your support. And I'm looking forward to serving again. Thank you.
Mr. White-Latika.
Thank you, Your Honor. I enjoyed being part of and helping to organize and plan the Veterans Day Ceremony. On November 11th, we had last week. And talking about the ceremony after the fact with the veterans, we believe it was the most successful Veterans Day Ceremony that we've ever had. Our estimate is maybe 500 people were present. That's hard to get on a weekday during the middle of the day. But Campbell Middle School Chorus did great. And the Whitfield Academy Concert Band did a great job. And, you know, we enjoyed having the kids there to participate in the veterans and the talks. And, you know, that was a very, very nice event for the city. Also enjoyed participating today at the Military Appreciation Luncheon put on at the Cobb Galleria Center. I was very pleased to note at the end of the ceremony, an old friend, Brian Johnstone, who's the Senior Public Relations Officer at Lockheed Martin Aircraft, was named the USO, he received the USO Patriot Award. Brian and I go way back. We served together in the early 80s. And he's had a remarkable career, both in the military and in the private sector. And that's, that's very well deserved. I also want to note that as of last week, Emory University Hospital has begun operating the hospital at the former Emory Adventist site here in Smyrna. I announced several weeks ago that they were going to, Emory Healthcare was going to preserve the certificate of need at that hospital by operating a minimal two-bed hospital facility. That hospital facility, as of last week, is now functioned, functioning. And it's staffed with appropriate personnel. It does not have the capability to take walk-in patients. You can't walk in, there's no emergency room, and be assigned one of the two beds. But through the Emory system, if it's appropriate from one of the other hospitals, they can direct you to the Smyrna Hospital. And again, I think that keeps the options for the city and the community open in terms of making that a healthcare campus and a facility and hopefully, you know, adding more hospital-related services in the future. So very pleased with that. And finally, our prayers go out to the people in Paris, France, and, you know, other victims of terror. It's, it's a difficult, tough world that we have today. And you can't go around thinking that couldn't happen here because it already has on September 11th. It could happen anywhere. We, as a nation and as a people, must be prepared to make the sacrifices necessary to just stop that, its pure evilness. There's no other word to describe it. You know, to our Parisian friends, nous sommes avec vous toujours. We are with you always. We'll keep you in our prayers. With that, I yield.
Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to express my appreciation and degree of humility about being reelected to another four years to serve the city. It's a great city and we're all blessed to have all of the amenities. We have a great leadership team and a superb staff. What disappointed me was the low turnout that all of Cobb County experienced. Either that's an affirmation that they think everybody's doing a fair job or there's a degree of apathy. I know down in my ward, some of it is because of our confusing zip code issue. And we're going to try to address that one last time with this council on the way out the door with an expression of a resolution. And I'd like the new council to do that as well. I think we're getting closer in some of our conversations to maybe reaching past this most delayed impasse. Also, relative to public safety, we see in the news, particularly with the terrorists that are wreaking havoc in some parts of the world, how important public safety in a community is. We're blessed to have a first-class staff, both in the police and fire departments. But our 911 Emergency Operations Center as well, Emergency Management Program, has been heralded and recognized nationally. Let's hope that we never have to employ the training that all of these fine folks have undergone. But it's comforting to know that from a public safety perspective, the largest single expenditure in your city taxpayer budget is to the public safety community because it is that important to us to have a safe environment for us, both to do business, to invite and welcome our guests, but also a place for us to live, work, and play. And I'm grateful to be associated with and a part of the public safety community and this council that has that priority and the right order. With that, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Mr. Mike Jones.
Nothing added, sir.
Scott Cock. Ms. Terry Graham. We do not have a show cause hearing. No one signed up for citizens input. I declare. Okay, oh, thank you. You're talking about the funeral? I'll say this in closing. Ms. Clifford Poston, longtime resident of Smyrna, the Poston family, Bill Milburn and Mary Ann Poston. All grew up in Smyrna and went to Campbell High School. They moved to Marietta, Trayton Homes, a big part of our community. And she passed away this past Friday. And her services were today at First Baptist Church in Smyrna. And it was nice to see all the good things the family had to say about Smyrna. They've all moved to other places, but they got their start here, so. All right, if there's another business, I declare this meeting adjourned. It looks like, I'll tell you exactly what time it is. 8:39.